How is the church, okay, talking the Church of Jesus Christ, not Latter Day Saints, Church of Jesus, how is the church supposed to engage with the culture war in a bold and godly way? Super important question with the insanity of our culture today. Did God give permission to the church to stand for justice? My friend Heather Schott, we've had her husband Landon Schott on the show before, powerhouse fighters from Mercy Culture Church in Fort Worth, Texas. Heather joins me today to share how the American church should be responding to the culture war, to the attack on the family, on children, on women. We talked about witches, near-death experiences, crazy LGBT mobs, evil city councils, trying to stop justice ministries, and more, because Heather and the whole team at Mercy Culture Church, which I just spoke at recently, they they're contesting daily with and against the culture of death. Send this to your pastor, your Christian friends. This episode will give you encouragement and hope when you stand for biblical values that God will be with you and he will honor that courage and that stand. Hey, guys, will you give us a follow on Rumble, okay, YouTube last year, like, two strikes on my channel, they almost got rid of the whole show, okay, because we talk about things that they have to put warnings on. All right, if Gavin Newsom becomes president 2028 and my YouTube channel gets taken away, make sure you've subscribed at Rumble to help us get the word out there to wake up the church. Give us a reading and review. I've so been enjoying reading them recently. You guys were responding really kindly, but it's this tiny little thing you can take 40 seconds to do and shows they get a bunch of ratings and reviews, they fill in the algorithms and they show up more on iTunes podcasts. So it helps us get the get the message out there. So if you've got the iTunes app, the little purple podcast app, leave five stars, write a nice review, let us know what you think about the show. And, and gosh, join us at the White Rose Resistance. We're the fastest growing pro-life organization in the country. We're definitely the most masculine pro-life organization in the country, because we believe actually men should be the protectors and providers, and that's part of the reason that we're in this mess, is that men have not done that, and churches have not discipled men to do that. We're a digital media activism organization, and we're launching resistance chapters, and we're making films to inspire the church to stand, to remember who they are. Babies are getting saved. We helped shut down an abortion clinic in Colorado with our friends at Brave Church that we launched a chapter with. This is a ministry to pour into that we have an incredible team and we need your help. So if you just join at $35 a month, that would bless the whole team so much, as we're saving babies and waking up the most powerful organism for change in the world, the church. Get your battle box in the mail at $35 a month and join our app. $70 a month, we call that air support. You join our book club. I think we we just read When Harry Became Sally, or we're about finishing up that book, super fun. And, and then you just get all of our resources on the app, and you just become little pro-life ninjas, and you can give more if you'd like, but join at one of those levels. Join us, okay, as we retake Christendom by tearing down the high places and making the local church great again. Let's get into it. This is The Seth Gruber Show. Heather Schott, welcome to The Seth Gruber Show, the better half. I had I had your husband on a couple of years ago. Don't tell him I said that. I'm just kidding.
He's a good guy. He's a good guy.
He is. He is. But this anyways, guys, Heather, I mean, you just listened to the intro, but Mercy Culture Church is probably one of the most, oh, bold, unapologetic, involved churches, like, in the culture where I mean, my earthly hero Pastor Jack Hibbs is like this too, but there are so few churches that have do so much in the city God's put them. And, and but your heart for Jesus, for the family, for the least of these is it's just, well, it's sad that it's it's still rare in, in 2025, even after Roe got overturned, even after we narrowly missed Jezebel Harris as a president. But you've never been on the show, and I just, I just thought, this is kind of overdue, like, and Landon was like, two years ago, I was like, people need to meet Heather and learn more about what God's doing at Mercy Culture Church. But, but, but before we get into all the epicness, Heather, who is Heather Schott? Who is Heather Schott? And how did you become who you are?
Thank you for having me. It's an honor to be with you today and totally love everything that you stand for in the pro-life, pro-life movement. Obviously, we're both super passionate about that. Man, who is Heather Schott? I am a incredibly grateful daughter of the King that restored and redeemed my life, shouldn't be here today. And so I'm, I'm grateful to be alive. And I was once living man for the world. We can get into my testimony if you want. But I was, I was once living fully on bold in the world. And when he came and set me free, I was like, look, in the same way for the kingdom, I'm going to be a radical. And so I believe it was the redemption story, the testimony of my life of what what I'm doing today and a part of today that drives and fuels me.
Yeah, that's why I like, I always love asking people stories. I mean, like, we live in a story, you know, our, our king is a storyteller. And all the stories people love, like, the best fantasy and fiction stories, you know, the stories and books that you grew up in love with, it's because they're retelling aspects of the real greater story. It was what Tolkien and Lewis called the true myth, the myth, the myth-making world of Jesus and what he accomplished. But it's like, no, it's not. It's the real myth. It's the true myth. And so every other story whispers his name. So we all love stories. It's we're living in one. We, to some extent, we write our own stories. We have those choices to to enter into the kingdom and the adventure with the Lord, or to kind of say, screw you, I'm going to live as my own God. And so when, when I, my wife and I spent some time with you guys, oh, my gosh, a year and a half ago, we were just so blessed and blown away at your testimony and how the Lord's used that now with, with Mercy Culture Church, with you and Landon and everything you're doing. So, so yeah, like, how did, how did God turn you guys into these absolute warriors?
It's, it's a wild story. First of all, my, we'll go all the way back. My mom was raised in a religious cult. And then my dad was raised in a godless, a godless home. His father said, there is no God, gave him his first beer at six years old, and said, it's time to be a man. And so you have a collision of my mom rebelling out of a religious cult, and this godless, womanizing, in drugs, totally in the world, but good-looking guy, these, these two that run into each other's arms. Obviously, my mom being raised in a religious cult had no idea of what happens in the world, or what the signs at all are to look for in a man, whether or not he's godly or not. And she ends up getting pregnant with me at 19. The church says, hey, you gotta get married, you gotta get married and do the right thing. So they get married, they have me, and soon my mom finds out, oh, I married a drug dealer, somebody who's doing drugs himself, womanizing individual. He was selling drugs out of the basement of our home. And so she begins to confront him. And this is when physical abuse starts. She actually gets pregnant with my brother, who's two years younger than me, and he beats her so bad, he hospitalizes her. We come home from the hospital to another woman being moved into our house. And so when they divorce, the courts, right?
You're still a kid at this point.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I'm a toddler. I'm a toddler. My mom is suicidal. The only reason, ah, the only reason that she says she does not commit suicide is because life was, was in her womb, was literally looking at me and knowing that she was pregnant with another child. So she decided not to kill herself. And a church allows us to move into a trailer, a double-wide on their property. And unfortunately, the courts gave my dad equal time. And so I was raised every other weekend, going from a Christian home into a home, drugs, pornography, women, partying, I mean, snorting lines of cocaine off of, you know, tables, everything. So two different worlds. And so, of course, you know, as a teenager, you have your dad on one side that says, you could do whatever you want, and your mom that has rules, boundaries, church, and all this stuff, you know? And honestly, I would describe, in my opinion, the church, even my, my mom was going to at that time, was a dead church. Like, I didn't know God could speak to you, you could feel God, you had a relationship with God. He was a historical figure. I never connected really with God through that, that church. And so it was like, awesome, I can do whatever I want. My dad's moved in, began 13, 14, 15 years old, started off with marijuana, turns into hard drugs, cocaine, I mean, every drug that you can imagine, full-blown alcoholic. And this is wild, Seth. I come to this point in my life where this odd series of supernatural events takes place in my life. And it starts off where I overdose. I overdose one night. We're going from party to party, and out of the anger of my childhood, and my dad, and all the stuff with divorce and everything, stepdad is now in the picture. My anger came out through partying and drugs and alcohol. So, I mean, I'm just snorting lines of everything and anything. I don't even know what it is all night long.
Geez, you're a teenager.
And we start to go up, I'm, I'm 17. And I remember walking up the stairs to this apartment building. And I'm starting to feel not good. Everything's spinning at this point. And they go to pull a bong out in the kitchen, and they tell this little girl, this toddler, like a three-year-old, they yell at her, get out of here and go clean up the living room. I mean, it's like one in the morning. And I feel like this compassion in my heart. And then I'm thinking, why is she around us? She should not be around us. And I go to sit on the couch to console her. And when I go to console her, I start waving. And when I go to reach out for her, I realize I'm seeing multiple of her right now, that I'm reaching out and I'm not grabbing a child. I don't know which one that I'm seeing is actually her. So I say, come sit down next to me to bring her comfort. The next thing I know, she comes and sits next to me. My friend comes over and says, Heather, are you okay? And I blackout. I blackout. From that moment, I have no recollection of the next three days. What happens is my best friend tells the dealer that we're with, drop her off at home, but his house was before mine. My best friend is dropped off, the dealer sees me beginning to foam at the mouth and says, she's dead, I'm not going to jail for this. He turns the car back around, goes heads to downtown Seattle, drops me off in an abandoned apartment, four dead, like trash on that floor. I laid there for three days. No recollection, no consciousness. I believe with all of my heart that I was dead. What happens is the schools call my mom, say Heather hasn't been in school for a couple of days. Long story short, she tracks down my best friend who tracks down the dealer and says, you're going to show me where she's at. I, for the first time, hear something, and I can hear them arguing and fighting in the living room, my best friend and the dealer, because my best friend says she's dead, what have you done? You've killed her. They go, they scoop me up off of the floor. He scoops me up off of the floor. First time, I kind of, I try to let him know, like, I'm not dead, I'm not dead, like, don't get rid of me. And they, they bring me home. I go to all these doctor's appointments the next day. They begin to do blood work. I'll never forget, Seth, the doctor coming in, and he says these words to me, he says, you're a walking dead woman. You have more drugs in your system than what should have killed three grown men. And for the first time, I feel this fear that I hadn't had in a long time. I shouldn't be alive. Why am I alive? And this is when this odd series of supernatural events that I think I'm going crazy, because I don't realize God can speak. I don't realize that God is real. And he begins to take me through a series of events where he rips drugs out of my life, alcohol out of my life, stealing out of my life, sex out of my life with my, with my boyfriend. I mean, wild events. I actually write about all of it in my book, Unscarred, because I heard the Lord say to me, I bore the scars on the cross so that you wouldn't have to bear them. And it was from that moment on where God began to wake me up. I mean, I remember Seth hitting my hands on a bathroom counter one day, because I'm hearing voices, not really realizing, it's God. And I tell the voice to shut up. I say, shut up. Not really, like, I'm talking to God, you know? And his mercy and grace is so beautiful. This is crazy. Three months after I overdose, I meet my now-husband Landon, who is a pastor's kid, never touched alcohol, drugs in his life, is a virgin. Okay, my mom introduces us and says, you know, you gotta, you gotta meet my daughter, she needs help, basically. He's a youth pastor. And he brings me to his dad's Pentecostal church. Okay, you got black church mamas with their, with their tambourines dancing, everything in church. I've never seen anything like this in my life. But Seth, this is what is so powerful. It was the first alive church that I'd ever been in. And I thought, this is like a party in church. I'm not sleeping for the first time. And so I closed my eyes, even though I didn't understand it, I closed my eyes, and I felt this peace wash over me like a waterfall. It was the presence of God. And for the first time in a long time, I began to weep. And I said, Lord, if this is you, this is what? This feeling that I feel right now, I want it to be my new addiction for the rest of my life. It was crazy, Seth. He delivered me of all addiction immediately. No seven-step, 12-step, whatever programs, like delivers me, heals me. And this is what, what drives me today, for the deliverance and healing, setting the captives free, for the lost, is, man, I know, I know, if he delivered me and he took me out of that pit, he can do it, he can do it for anybody.
Wow. That's beautiful. That's incredible, Heather. I love those stories so much. And I guess one of the heartbreaking things, and I guess maybe I'd love to even almost hear your thoughts on this, I guess, Heather, but is a lot of people in Christian ministry, in massive platforms, authors, podcasters, speakers, leaders of big evangelical institutions, okay, or senior pastors, okay, with lots of influence, however we wanted to find that word. I mean, that's kind of, you know, today, that means like, I can reach a lot of people. Yeah, exactly, exactly. But I guess a lot of people have powerful redemption, salvation stories, where they would say, like, you know, from the miry pit, right, from the depths of Sheol, from the valley of the shadow of death, to where God's brought me today. And yet, the, the church in America doesn't seem to be marked by this culture, this commitment that I, that is so central to mercy culture, which is why I love it so much, of like, yeah, like, we've been there. So we care about orphans, widows, the disenfranchised, the sexually targeted, the addicted, the unborn, like, like, most churches, if they do ministry outside of evangelism, it's maybe it's the, the politically correct ministry, soup kitchens for the poor, and help a woman coming out of trafficking, giving her a place to live. But oh, but don't you talk about gay marriage?
I wish there was more of that, actually.
And, yeah, honestly, like, but if it's like, oh, it's gay marriage in a burgafell, you better not talk about that. Better not talk about pro-life. You better not talk about trans, okay? You better not talk about the filth in the schools. Don't, we don't love those, we don't try to love those people.
That wasn't part of our church planning strategy to grow more seats, more rears in the seats and more money in the plates. And so that's the problem, is now our church planning strategies is how do we, it's attractional church, right? How do we attract church? And then how do we put on performances to keep people happy? So we push presence out, we push justice and righteousness out, we push pleasing the Lord out. And what is pleasing to us? And how do I build my empire, my following? I mean, it's so twisted, right? We're supposed to be building a following for Him, a people of no reputation. So that means I preach the whole gospel, not that which is towards itching ears and what the people want to hear, but that which is what is pleasing to Him. And you're right, we have lost so much of that. So, I mean, if we don't have the courage to preach that homosexual, homosexuality is biblically wrong, how in the world are we having the courage to go into the streets, to expose darkness out of our safe places in the four walls of the church, you know? And so we have a lot of work to do in the body of Christ. I do feel a bit of an awakening happening, and that's why I actually feel Biden could have been a blessing, actually, a little bit in disguise. You see historically, in the Word of God, when oppression from kings and leaders came, the people began to cry out, God, we need you, we repent, you know? And we need that in the body of Christ. And so I do see some churches waking up right now, but as the bride of Christ fully, yeah, we have to wake up, preach the gospel, get outside of our churches, and be people of justice. We serve a God of justice. So how in the world, how in the world are we not leaders and people of justice? All throughout His Word, all throughout Psalms, He talks about His, His throne being built upon righteousness, righteousness and justice, that He loves justice. We hear the world talking all about right now. Justice, justice, justice. There's going to be no justice with no righteousness. It's the same word. The only way that justice comes is by the church, because the righteousness of God has to be flowing for true justice to come. This is why we see no justice or perverted justice, is because the church has stepped back. They've been silent and void. It's time for the church to step up.
Heather, you know that line that the, that leftists will chant at their mostly peaceful, somewhat fiery rallies? They say, no justice, no peace, no justice, no peace. And, and I'm like, well, in a certain sense, actually, that's true. But you're, what they mean is, we're going to continue to incite violent insurrections until we get our, you know, our culturally pagan-defined definition of justice, you know? But, but it's like, you see this, but I guess, Heather, you see that a lot in the culture. You see lost people using quasi-Christian language to try to give shape and framework to their secular worldview. And I always thought, what a, what a layup opportunity for pastors to like, take what's happening in the culture and be like, actually, what you want is this, and now let me proclaim to you the full counsel of God. Why else do you think that, that so many churches are, and pastors are such cowards when it comes to issues that are like, so close to the heart of God? The Last Stand, I've adored you guys. It's coming up. We're so close. In Downey, California, on June 21, 2025. Have you gotten your ticket yet? We want to see you there. Join, join us on this one-day, packed-day, Christian festival with worship, speakers, activities, and honestly, my favorite part is the fellowship with like-minded brothers and sisters. Do you feel that? Like, when you look at the insanity and you're like, where is, where is people, where are the fighters? Where, where are people going to join us? You're going to get that here, because in order to overcome a culture of death, we must usher in a culture of life. And historically, only the church has been able to do that. We have speakers like David Harris Jr., Alex Clark, Riley Gaines, Heidi St. John, Victor Marks, Lou Engel, Pastor Jack Hibbs, and Worship with Ben Fuller, 10th Avenue North, Influence Music, and so many more. It's going to be one of those life-shifting events. And, and we're asking and believing that this is a move of God that will become an annual thing to reach the hearts of the next generation of young people and of lay Christians who are taking back the mantle of Christian resistance. But the resistance is far from over. Family and biblical values are still under attack until our country turns to Jesus. And it's the church's responsibility to lead the way and stand now. Okay, so guys, I'll see you there. Go to thelaststand.com, thelaststand.com, and get your ticket today and use code Seth10, Seth10, for 10% off your tickets. I'll see you at The Last Stand.
One, I don't think it's about knowing God anymore. Because when we know Him, we have an intimate relationship with Him. When we're intimate with Him, we know what His heart beats for. I think we're more intimate with pleasing people. I think we're more intimate with our Instagrams and our posts. I think we're more intimate with the next good sermon, or again, post. And that's what we serve. That's what our ministries live to serve. And without knowing the King of Justice, you can't have the heart for justice. And so what is happening is when you don't know the King of Justice, you're not intimate, and you don't have His heart, then you have the echo and the roaring and the noise of the world with perverted justice. So now you have the body of Christ that's completely confused, and they think perverted justice, or you have these words of confusion, or love is love, and you have Christians that are repeating this nonsense, that are worldly slogans. No, love is not love. God is love. We don't know our word, and we're not preaching the truth. So we don't know Him, we don't know our word, we're void of truth. The truth is what brings freedom. And this is why we've seen such an attack on truth, really since COVID, because if truth is a fluid thing, right, and I'm preaching to the choir right now, but then anybody's truth becomes truth, and now the body of Christ that's supposed to be preaching the truth, well, we don't even know what truth is anymore. So if we're not preaching it, then where's freedom? Again, it's void. How do we stand up for the murdering of, of babies? I, you begin to share facts that are like our normal day in and day out, Seth, and on Instagram, and you have Christians and leaders like, wow. I'm like, what do you mean, wow? It's been 50 years of murdering babies. How do you not know that? How, how do you, how are you not aware of that? Well, we're not actually even seeking truth. There's a problem. So our selfishness to build our own empires, platforms, churches, and everything, we have actually stopped seeking it. Not only do we not know it, we don't seek it. And when we don't seek it, we, I think that there's many pastors that have no idea, actually, unfortunately, of these issues that we're talking about. And then when we present them for the first time, it's like, what do I, what do I do? You know, and I don't want to demean all spiritual leaders and pastors. Some are trying the best that they can in their, in their cities, and loving people, and leading people well. It's intense being a pastor. So I feel for you. As a pastor, I know the weight that comes with it. But then I would encourage those pastors, you don't have to recreate the wheel. Partner with other organizations that feel those callings, but don't do nothing. Don't be silent, but then partner with other organizations and ministries that are Christ-centered, and that are doing something to bring revival and reformation, not just in the church, but in our nation.
Yeah, amen. There's a great line from Spurgeon, Heather. He said, he that perverts truth shall soon be incapable of knowing the true from the false. If you persist in wearing glasses that distort, everything will be distorted to you. And so we all have a set of lenses or glasses that we wear. What are they? And, and if you, if you can, if you continue to put on the world, if you continue to participate in the world's liturgy, and in the world's worldview, and in their lenses, and you wear them long enough, you as a Christian leader or pastor will no longer be able to diagnose the truth from the false. And it's, it's pretty sobering. So
I mean, you had, you had Saul to Paul, right, who had on the lenses of religion. And I think that that's what a lot of us are stuck in, that we want to sit here and call out other pastors and people within the church, exploiting the church. Not saying that there doesn't need to be some exposure for sure accountability, but let's exploit the church with your religion lenses, instead of actually getting out there and exposing darkness, like the Word of God tells us to do, and being a light. But I mean, America needs Jesus. I know you agree with this, like, no president, no leader is turning, or is saving America. It is only Jesus. So when we begin to exploit each other and attack and tear down one another, we're really attacking the testimony of Jesus. And the world's like, what in the world? The church is a hot mess. You guys are at each other's throats, and this is a reflection of our king, instead of saying, hey, we should unify, even despite some of our theological indifferences, even despite maybe, I don't know, whatever, whatever those differences are, and let's go be a light to a dark, hurting, and broken world. And that's a church that's unstoppable.
Yeah, yeah, amen. Your, your husband Landon said something when we were having a great conversation on the show a couple of years ago. And he said, when, when I, when I stopped caring about what the world thinks about me, what they say about me, whether they continue to tithe to the church, I'm paraphrasing, but when I stopped caring about the articles written about me, and the people who leave my church?
They leave the church.
I, I become dangerous.
It's freedom.
I always just thought that was, it was really cool. And then in the, in the last, you know, couple of years, I've watched how much people in Dallas, Fort Worth, the Rainbow Cult, if you will, how much they hate Mercy Culture. And I'm like, man, my new friends over here, all the right people hate them. And of course, you're not, you're not hating them. You're not like, being nasty. You're never attacking them. You're just, you're just standing for truth and protecting the kids and loving on women and battered women and sex-abused women and children and families.
Building a justice residence, and that's so an angering to build a long-term restoration home for women rescued out of sex trafficking.
Well, you have, you have to wonder about that, actually, right, Heather? Do you remember when The Sound of Freedom came out?
Oh, yeah.
Do you remember the mainstream media, I call them journalistic prostitutes for the culture of death, but do you remember the legacy news media, Heather, their, the coverage? QAnon film, far-right-wing QAnon film. It's like, dude, it's a story about a guy who like, goes into dangerous territories and like, gets women and children who are like, sex slaves out like gets women and children who are like sex slaves out of like, you're like, it's like Shakespeare, like methinks the lady doth protest too much. You're like, why all you lib organizations? Why do you have a problem with The Sound of Freedom? What the heck are you doing in your free time? It's like you have to, you have to start going. Exactly. I'm like, dude, and that's like, that's totally legitimate to ask those questions. Cause you're like, what is really going on? But so there's a story there that kind of needs to be told and it's part of a larger conversation and like questions that I had for you. But to set it up, one of the things that I, so actually I was saying this to some friends. Well, I just, I, you guys just had me speak at Mercy Culture, which was an honor for my, this life or death tour we were doing about it. It's all theological, it's all spiritual and it's, it's all Genesis one flipped upside down. It's, they took our cultural mandate and they perverted and inverted it. And, and anyways, I was talking to some people afterwards and I made this point and I've, I've made this point on platforms before as well, but I completely believe it Heather. And that is that it's sort of, it's kind of a weird thing actually, that my ministry, the White Rose Resistance even exists. Like it's a little bit weird and, and here's why. It's because like for hundreds of years, maybe 1900, maybe 1900 years, the, the church, Christians, the church was defined by their local struggles against evil that targeted the vulnerable, the weak, the marginalized, the unloved and the unlovely. Okay. And so the church always stood in culture, but they were apart from culture. And because they were apart from culture, they changed their culture. Okay. So like the, actually the church has been defined for 1900 years Heather. And I'm only saying that because it was roughly in the early 1900s when the church adopted a new approach to the culture. We can get into that, but they were defined by being countercultural. Like, like the ideas of the right to life and the rule of law and order, don't go back to the Greek and Roman philosophers. Those ideas go back to the New Testament. Okay. And, and, and the early church was, I'm talking like, like the first 60 years after Christ's ascension, like very early church. They were defined by their opposition to infanticide, child sacrifice, and the sexualization of women. Early Christians, you know how Mercy Culture, Citizens for Life and us, you know, we do, we've, we've done pro-life activism together. Well, the, the church, this whole sidewalk counseling, like standing outside of abortion clinics and saying, choose life, we love you. Yeah, those were called life watches in like 60, 70, 80 AD, 90 AD. And Christians would set up life watches with Christians outside of the perimeter of the trash heaps that they called high places where they would, where it was acceptable and legal to abandon infants on top of a trash heap to die from exposure or from actually animals actually eating them. And so early Christians would, they'd set up life watches where Christians would sit on the perimeter and, and when Romans would go put their infants on top of a trash pile, then the, then that Christian would run out and rescue the infant and they'd raise them in the admonition of the Lord. So, so I guess what I'm trying to say is this, I wish the White Rose Resistance did not exist because I wish we can make the local church great again, where local churches are taking responsibility in the city and in the county where God has put them. So the whole hip 501(c)(3) guest speaker thing can just go away. But that's what Mercy Culture does. You have all of these ministries that are actually, they're a part of Mercy Culture and they're doing that kind of work. And a lot of Christians don't think about in that framework of like, oh, that's how all churches used to be, local churches. So can you talk about like why you've, you and Landon have done that? Why that's important to your team and what some of those ministries are? Because this used to be the norm. But first we'd like to thank our sponsor, we love them, of the Seth Cooper Show, Every Life Diaper Company, everylife.com, super simple. Okay. Guys, if you have not done this yet, why would you not do this? It is so, it is so stinking easy. Plus you can pat yourself on the back and say, I am not using my dollars to participate in a culture of death, right? If you're having babies or your grandkids are having babies, or you're involved at the nursery at your church, you need to get diapers and wipes from everylife.com. And my friends, the co-founders, they, they discovered that basically every diaper company in America financially or rhetorically supports the abortion industry. Like the, the people who make more money when more babies are born, because more diapers and wipes are needed are helping subsidize the killing of babies, which is the murder of their clientele base. Make it make sense, the woke mind virus does weird things to you. We have to fight in alignment with our dollars. And so go to everylife.com and use promo code Seth10, Seth10 for 10% off your order. You let them know that we sent you. That supports us here at the White Rose Resistance and the Seth Cooper Show. This is mindless, okay? If you're having babies, you must get your wipes and diapers from everylife.com. Tell your local pregnancy center and tell your local church, think of all the diapers that churches buy, they should be supporting a pro-life company and not a pro-abortion one, right? Everylife.com, make every life America's premier diaper company. That would be so cool and healthy for the culture. Thank you, Every Life, go support them, guys.
And it, it needs to be the norm again. And it's not saying, again, oh, Mercy Culture is just doing everything right. No, this is how Christ empowered and meant to empower the body of Christ since the beginning of time to act and to influence and to shift culture, to lead in culture. And so the, the first one that began was called the Justice Reform. I'm the founder of that. The vision is answering the cry for justice by bringing reformation from city to city. This is our anti-human trafficking organization that we've been running for about five years now. And this is, and maybe I'll just give a brief on, on the, our three justice ministries and then we can come back to the justice residence story. Because I feel like that's, that story will be very encouraging to pastors, spiritual leaders and Christians to stand and not be intimidated. Cause it's noise, it's noise from culture to intimidate. And then we go, ah, we run back and they're like, yes, you didn't even have to do anything. It's Jezebel's letters, right? That are words that gets us to run. And so if we get time, I'll share that story. Citizens for Life is the one that we've partnered with together and this is our pro-life organization. And not only are we bringing awareness and changing legislation and, and speaking into it, but a massive arm and part of it is adoption. And so we're working on opening our adoption agency right now, should be open this June. So exciting. And then just believing to be a part of an adoption movement in our nation and training other churches and how to foster and in how to adopt a lot of things that we're working on there. And I think we definitely got to talk about life resolution. Super exciting. It's going before the Senate tomorrow. That'll be, yep. And then Senator Ted Cruz gives his speech on the floor, the first week of June on the life resolution. And so I'm not only believing for June to officially be life month, but I am believing for the dismantling, I can't get off, I just started going, right? I am believing for the dismantling of pride month, right? We are not having those rainbow flags stolen and waving all over our nation decreeing pride. God will not bless a nation with the decree of pride everywhere. We're not giving a month to sexual immorality. It's insane. And so we're, we're believing for June to be life month. That was the month 2022 that Roe v. Wade was overturned. So that's our Citizens for Life organization. And then for Liberty and Justice, this is, this is the organization that's waking up the church, that is training the church and how to raise up righteous men and women to run for political seats in their city. And so this is, this has been massive in the transformation of our region. We've impacted, man, in just the last couple of years, over 90 seats that we have flipped, putting in righteous men and women into those seats through the partnership of the church and for Liberty and Justice. So this is something, if you're listening right now and you're like, man, I want to be a part of that, we're, we're opening for Liberty and Justice chapters all over the state of Texas right now and into other states. And so, um, yeah, those are, those are the justice ministries.
Just a newish church, you guys aren't even a mega, I don't even like the word mega church, actually.
I don't either.
But, but you're not small, but you're not, you're not 10,000 in, well, actually with the other campuses maybe, but, but the, the, the main campus. And yet you, you're telling me that, that, that a little ministry at a newish church in Fort Worth has, has flipped over 90 different political seats with like Christian men and women who are going to stand for righteousness?
Yeah. And I, I just want to say to what you're saying right now, because a lot of people call us.
That's amazing.
Mega church right now, it's not mega church mentality. If you would have heard of my husband in the very first building we were at, we were in a full-on fight because we're in a building that was going to seat about 200 people. I was like, babe, this is going to work. He's like, I'm not trying to build a big church, just trying to build a church that's pleasing to the Lord. I was like, I love that heart, but this is what I'm seeing and this isn't going to work, you know? And so only by the hand of the Lord, not some church planning strategy that has turned it into some mega churches, because there are eight campuses now, three more that are coming. And so only by the hand and grace of God, not what man can do, what the Lord can do has happened. With that being said, all of our justice ministries, they were birthed in literally our infancy days, in the first couple few years of the church. And Seth, I was in executive meetings, senior meetings, elders meetings. I was the bull in the china shop that I was like, I am not going to be quiet. I get we're trying to figure out children's workers and volunteers. This is all real stuff that are weights on pastors and I get it and they care if AC works and if their kids are being taken care of. But me as a pastor, since I said yes to this thing, if I die tomorrow, I know I'm not pleased with myself that I have to go before him one day, that I didn't answer the call to Isaiah 61, that he said he's anointed all of us, all of us to set the captastry and to bind up the brokenhearted. And so I, I have just been ringing this bell and not just me. I mean, we have so many incredible reformers, pastors, leaders of Mercy Culture that are amazing. My, my husband's heart, that's like run, go, you know, approving $14 million to build a justice residence, you know? And so I believe really that actually, and I say this to pastors all the time, our pursuit for righteousness, what is right in his eyes, not, not what's right in our eyes. Our pursuit for what is right in his eyes and saying yes to these ministries of serving outside of the house of God is actually a huge part of the favor on Mercy Culture and the explosion that has taken place. And too many pastors use the excuse, we're not strong enough yet, we don't have enough money, we're too new. And I'm like, no, you're not getting it. These things are key because they're his heart. And when you care about what breaks his, all of the sudden, his favor comes upon and everything else becomes so much easier when his hand of favor is there because you're taking care of the things that are necessary and important to his heart.
Whew. I, I have, I have scratched my head a lot over the last few years, Heather, and I've, and I've, I've tried to think deeper about why all this is. Cause I've had the honor and opportunity to be able to awaken a lot of Christians and mobilize them so that they will get in the fight for the children and the family and honestly preserving Western civilization. Like the church is going to preserve, is going to exist either way, it always will. Like the blood of the saints is the seed of the church. It's fine. But like, if you stand by and do nothing when there's sexually castrating children, murdering babies through point of birth, passing fourth trimester, actually infanticide laws that they're pushing in Washington right now, Washington state where you just were, they're pushing this bill that like, basically you can't investigate the death of babies up to one or two months old. So if like, if an infant just dies and you're like, maybe we should just make sure it was natural causes and it wasn't a psychopathic mom or dad, like the Democrats in Washington are like, yeah, we, like, let's, let's just not, let's make it illegal to investigate infant deaths. Like, okay, it's like, okay, we all knew you were going to go from third trimester's abortions to fourth trimester abortion. What, okay, whatever it is, all that happening and, and, and the church stays silent. Yeah, I'm always trying to think about why that is so I can deal with that and get Christians to see it. Is, is it just that the pastor doesn't spend time with the Lord? Is it that he's a hireling? Is it that he's, you know, too close friends with Klaus Schwab and big left-wing donors? Is that, is that sometimes, I think sometimes it is. But I saw this quote the other day, Heather, from someone named Rinald McCalle and Professor Intellectual, and I thought this was actually incredibly profound. And I think it might get at a theological difference. He says, "Failure to properly relate the gospel commission of the New Testament to the commission of Genesis or the cultural mandate lies behind much of evangelicalism's current weaknesses and internal conflicts." In other words, he's saying, or his take on this, if, if we're asking the question, why is this, what's going on? Is that too many Christians and pastors begin their gospel at John 3:16 and not Genesis 1. Do you have any thoughts about that?
I, okay, well, this is, this is what's coming up in me is I was, I was trying to look it up. I think it's John 10, I apologize if I'm, if I'm wrong, but it's the parable of the good shepherd. And in this parable, Jesus warns us of the hirelings, the hired shepherds, that when the wolves come, they run and they don't protect the sheep. They don't feed the sheep. They were there for their own reasons because they're hired shepherds. So they have their motives that are involved instead of God's motives and heart for the sheep. And I believe that this is, I mean, in this warning of this parable, this is so much of what we're seeing in the body of Christ is leaders, spiritual leaders that are purchased. They're purchased, they're, they're in it, either for, for their motives, for their platforms. We, we went into this. I also believe that fear is a powerful weapon. We both know it's what Hitler used. We saw it in COVID, people just lining up like, give me this shot in the arm. I don't know what's in it. Nobody can tell me what's in it, but the news has put so much fear in me. I'm going to line up and have something shot into my body that I don't know what it is. So fear is a powerful weapon. And I believe that a lot of pastors, there is so much fear, fear of what's going to be said about me, what's going to happen to my church? And if half of my church leaves, you know, you, you had this in COVID where you had some of the pastors that were being handcuffed or whatever. You have pastors and spiritual leaders right now that are being attacked and exposed. So what? You hear silence again in the body of Christ, instead of standing up for good men, they're afraid. And here's the thing, is any decision ever made out of fear is never going to be a good decision. And more than most likely, you could be the next one. And is any gonna, anybody gonna be standing there defending you and protecting you when the wolf comes after you? When you departed and left the sheep, you left other shepherds as they were being attacked. And so I think it's wild to say the body of Christ and spiritual leaders are stricken with fear when it's literally the opposite of faith, of what we're supposed to be full of as the body of Christ. And I think we have to become people of faith again, and that's hard in America where we are, have everything that we want and need at our fingertips. We don't know what true persecution is. Persecution to us is losing some followers on social media. And I was so hurt, you know, losing a few church members, you know? That's wild when people are dying for their faith in other countries. And so I, I, I mean, the rated R thing comes to mind of what I want to say, but we need to get our muscles back, okay? In the body of Christ and stand up for what's right.
Yeah. Well, at the White Rose Resistance, we call it testicular fortitude. But that's okay.
So I was raised with all boys and brothers, so I'm used to that.
One of my pastor friends says, he said, we need men whose stones are still intact. But so Heather, before, before we say bye, so you know, White Rose has partnered with Citizens for Life, we're taking back June as life month together. At my event, the Last Stand in June, we actually will have some folks from Citizens for Life and with a table there. And we're going to be telling people actually to go home and text this number and host a life march in your city and learn how to do it. Maybe not enough time to get a bunch done this year, but we'll be helping rally thousands of churches for June 2026, which is a month before America's 250th anniversary. And so I actually, I said this at Mercy Culture, Heather, I said, you know, we're going to be celebrating America and 250 years and her greatness. And it's okay to celebrate America again, which is cool under Trump. But really our proclamation needs to be, it's like, actually, you actually can't make America great again, when the sewers of our country run red with the bodies and blood of our children and, and mothers are flushing their own children down, not just the Texas toilets and sewage system, Heather, but every state in America. And we don't have time to get into that conversation right now because of time, but it's because too many pro-life establishment people think that mothers are victims. And so, and by the way, they are, but we all are, aren't we? We're all the victims of lies of culture of social media. Almost every pedophile was himself.
All of us need to not be victims anymore.
Right, yeah, amen. Yeah. Like every pedophile was, most pedophiles Heather were raped or abused as children. So, so like, but that doesn't mean that you, you should be able to legally get away with what you're doing. So anyways, every state in America doesn't prosecute the mother, the aborting mother. or, or, or put the same legal protections for unborn babies that infants have. And so Texas and Tennessee and other states have pro-life protections for the babies. But actually if the mother gets the abortion pill and then flushes her baby down the toilet, that's actually legal for her to do. So you, you, we're not going to MAGA, okay? When children can be bought and sold in the third-party reproductive technologies industry so that Pete Buttigieg and his husband can take those children home to a motherless home. We're not going to MAGA, okay? When children no longer have rights to mothers and fathers. We're not going to MAGA when there's now research showing that the water we're drinking might have aborted fetal cells in it because of all the aborted children being flushed down every, out the toilets in all 50 states in America. Yes, I, I want to make America great again too. But until we get back to protecting the children, babies and the family, there is no MAGA. And so anyways, we're proclaiming June as life month with you and getting people to host life marches. But why don't, finish with this story Heather. Why did the Rainbow Cult in, in Fort Worth? Why did they get so upset that you wanted to get this like huge facility to like house and then disciple battered women coming out of sex slavery and sex trafficking? That was a crazy story and I don't know if enough people heard about it.
Yeah, it's, it's completely demonic. It was a four-year battle, a two-year intense battle, uh, that we had the Rainbow Cult. Like you said, uh, neighbors behind the church, uh, that began to say, everything that we can possibly do, we are going to stand up against you, went to newspapers, begin to slander and gossip. I mean, we have death threats, wild things. I mean accusations, people trying to kidnap our kids from church on a Sunday morning.
Are you serious?
Wild stuff.
Dang, you don't do that at Mercy Culture.
Yeah, no, you don't. We're ready for you, we're ready for you, okay? They, they get offended when we said witches and warlocks, like we're calling them demeaning names. We're like, no, 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 you're sending witches literally into our services to try to cast spells on me as I'm preaching, having to carry them out, put.
That happened?
Yes.
Oh, like actually, like Satanic temple, like actually demon worshippers came into service. Wow.
A few times. One Sunday morning, when I, when I get here to minister, all of the outside doors or the majority of the outside doors of our church building has curses written all over it. The night before, there was a witches walk in the neighborhood. We've had the witches do seance type stuff on the front doorsteps of any Mercy Culture members in the neighborhood. So there's, there's been multiple wild situations to try to intimidate, to try to stop us from the newspapers to the witchcraft stuff. And then also trying to stir up city officials, city council, zoning commissions against us. And so we went to war, we went to war. And I knew that the Lord said, look, I'm not bored. I'm not like, you know what? This would be really fun to go build a $14 million facility that I've never done before. And, um, let's just go do this for fun because I'm bored. I'm doing it because the Lord said, so there's nothing that's stopping us from doing it. And so we entered into a pretty massive battle with the city, have a showdown moment in the mayor's office on the 19th floor of the city hall building with the city lawyers, our lawyers. And, uh, we began to confront corruption that we found in the city, confront, um, all of the discriminatory stuff that happened. They were trying to steal our zoning Seth. Because our zoning for our property is that we can build anything for any religious reason. So if I want to build a gas station and disciple people that are coming through getting gas, I can build that on this property. And they knew, um, the power of that religious right in our zoning and they tried stealing it from us. And so, um, even up into, so at, at this meeting with the mayor, she hears about it. We have evidence of it. So she says, okay, well, we'll immediately get you on the zoning docket and on the city council docket, because they had been pushing us off for months. I mean, nothing has ever taken this long and this many days ever to just get somebody on the docket to go through before a zoning commission. So they vote against us. They vote against us despite our legal right to build this on our property. I'm telling you, December 10th, 2024 was an epic moment and city hall was a showdown. Thousands of people in support for the justice residence. They said, the city hall has never been filled like this in the history, every single floor. Three floors of the old city hall, um, was filled with people too outside, couldn't pack obviously everybody into the room. And, uh, the mayor says this statement that the state and no government, including the federal government, should ever come in and encroach the rights of the church, especially when they have the right to build on their property. It was a pretty awesome moment, but I'm telling you, city council, they were about to literally taken off their jackets like they were going to get in fistfights. We were there until after midnight. We finally got the vote to approve the justice residence. We got our grading permit a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we broke ground two, about a week and a half ago. And actually as we speak, they are out there right now, taking down trees and moving dirt. And so we're just waiting on building permit next, but the justice residence will be built. And I wanted to tell this story to encourage pastors that when they get a no or they get intimidated by a witch or, or some neighbors, we just back down. I'm not backing down to a witch or a neighbor when we're talking about thousands of women that have been raped hundreds of times over and over. That's what their day, that's what, our worst nightmare is their reality every single day. And we're going to back down because somebody told us no in a mean way or sent a witch? No, what he accomplished on the cross and that authority and blood is so much greater than any of their intimidation. And I'm hoping that the justice residence becomes a story, uh, not just for Fort Worth, but for pastors all over the nation that encourages us to step up and to be people and leaders of justice in this hour.
Wow. No justice, no peace.
It's probably the wrong thing to be saying, right? When you want justice to be going around saying no justice, I don't know.
I love that story. I was so, I was actually, I was, I was right up the road at Flashpoint on the same day in Dallas. And, uh, I was, I didn't make it down in time and I wish I had been there for it. But, but it's anyways, it's incredible, guys. That's just, that's why we wanted to have Heather on. That's just what, that, that's what the local church for hundreds of years was marked by. They didn't, they didn't wait for a speaker or a podcaster or some nonprofit. It was just kind of local churches being local Christians and confronting evil where they lived. And if, if, if half of the churches in America live like that, when, when, when evil is targeting the young, the weak, the vulnerable, the voiceless, um, and those who can't defend themselves and just showing up and saying no and fighting back, even getting strategic. I mean, we really would make America great again. And so Heather, thank you for your heart, for Landon's heart, for your whole team there and, and what you're doing for issues that I, I believe biblically are those that are the closest to the heart of the Lord. And so, um, we bless you guys, we pray for you and please don't slow down.
Thank you, thank you for having me and look forward to partnering on more, uh, life issues, excited for the future.
And where, what do people text if they want to get a, a playbook on how to host a life march in their city?
Text the word life to 59090, or you can go to citizensforlife.com and that's where you can find a march nearest to you. You can still host, here's the thing, people see our marches with like thousands of people in downtown Dallas and stuff. And they're like, oh, I can't do that. You can go march with some moms around a Planned Parenthood and pray, and it'll grow each year. And so still, if you want to host a march, you can host a march in your city. We're almost in all 50 states or some states that have multiple with passionate churches. We're almost in all 50 states right now. So go to citizensforlife.com and there you can either register to host a march or be a part of a march near you.
I love it, I love it. Go do it, guys. Tell your pastors and local churches to host a life march and we'll, we'll see you soon Heather.
Thank you so much.